Ladies and gentlemen, thank you so much for joining us today. We are having a study session today on our three additional ordinance officers this meeting. Well, it's called on by Councilman Wenzel. And so I asked Councilman Wenzel to come prepare today, and I know he did. I've called him a couple of times. He has some great information for us. I am going to give the mic straight over to Councilman Wenzel. He'll then tell us what his expectations are. I'll hear from the rest of the council. We do have our Director of Ordnance with us and our ordinance officer, Kevin Abbott, here with us, who also does a great job, so thank you to them. Councilman Wenzel, you have the floor, sir.
Okay, thank you, Council Chair. First of all, this isn't really a study session because if it were a study session, we would require a couple hours. That's why I only asked the Council Chair for a half hour, because this is more of an update.
Okay.
And some information on what we're looking at right now, what we've got. Ask the residents, fellow council members, city employees to get ahold of us and say, what do they want? What would they like to see happen or change or stay the same? So with that being said, this is an update session. And thank you Director Dishroom for coming, Officer Abbott here, and everyone else that's here. One of the things that I was concerned with was the delay in getting these officers. And I'm using the word officers a little bit loosely, because I didn't know up until today that we were actually in the process of hiring a specific person. That's one of three that was okayed by, so that's a good start. And one of the things that I wanted to do was have an ordinance officer in the Building Department help with certificates of occupancies. And from my understanding, that is about to happen or is happening as we speak. And that's a good thing because we can, you know, we have houses out there, commercial properties, that don't have CFOs. And, you know, we could make, we could make extra money for that. And another thing is, if we put an officer, ordinance officer, in the Building Department, it's my idea to have them be strictly doing CFOs, maybe looking up different things, keep them out of the day-to-day ordinance, like animal control and grass and all that stuff. Have this person be specifically for the Building Department. And one thing you could do is check CFOs. And one other thing they can check is a thing called the P R E. And that's a primary resident exemption. And what that is, if you own a home, you get a break on your taxes, if you live in that home. Now, I'm sure there's plenty of rental houses out there where the person, I'm assuming this, owns the home, rents it out, but they may be going for the primary residence exemption. So I think that's something that this ordinance officer that works in the Building Department could look into, too. And this, this one officer in the Building Department that goes there, that's going to be a full-time job for this person. And we need to get a list of our rental properties. I don't know if the city has an actual list of rental properties. And we could have something like a residence report to the city. I think my neighbor is a rental property. Just make sure it's on the list. And what thing we have to do is educate our residents on the ordinances and, you know, what the penalties are, what's expected from the residents, what's expected from the business owners. And speaking of businesses, and I don't want to dwell on rental properties, but as council members, we get calls constantly about situations, about houses and businesses, and most of them are rental properties, and that's a fact. And I don't want to dwell on that point at all. But a rental property, it's not a home where the owner lives, it's a business. There's a person that owns it, that's renting it out to make a profit. So we should look at that a little bit differently. I don't know. I mean, for our businesses, we have ordinances on facade, all kinds of different ordinances that regulate businesses, that we don't do to residential properties. That's something we could look into. And Airbnb's is another thing. And the city council needs to be informed more about what's going on, because I didn't know until today that we're hiring an officer right now. I didn't know today that an officer may be going into the Building Department real soon. And we have one officer maybe being hired, and I hope we get the other two officers. If we get two more officers, I'd like to see at least one more officer designated to the South End specifically. There's, you know, the area from Southfield to Telegraph. We've got one officer that's paid for Tifa through Tifa in the Tifa area, that's west of Telegraph. We need to find out these rental properties, who the owners are. If we're going to, if we're going to put a fine on somebody for a specific situation violation, sometimes we don't know who the owner is. It's some, it's a company out of Arizona or out of state. And I think by ordinance, they have to have a representative of them within like a 20 minutes from the property that they own, something like that. But we gotta be more strict with our code enforcements, ordinance enforcements, even, you know, people that own their homes. I know, you know, there's people on my block, homeowners, and they break the ordinances all the time. I got a pamphlet, I took a bunch of pamphlets from the front here a couple weeks ago, ordinance pamphlets, and I drive around and I stop at people's houses and I see, oh, their grass is tall, their garbage cans are still out, they're all too early, they're putting trash out. I find in the packet, I put a big circle around it, and I stick it in their mailbox. And so, I mean, this is the opportunity now we have. We've been wanting more ordinance enforcement for a long time, and the ordinance department is doing a great job for what they've got. And I know they could use more help than three. And let's hope we get three. I mean, right now, I hope we're getting one. And that's why I wanted to have this short, so we can get our regular meeting started on time. And I want people, if anybody's got any comments, but people to get ahold of us and say, hey, you know, Denise, or hey, Mo, or hey, Nancy, you know, I would like to see this in the ordinance office, or I like this, let's keep this up. I think they're doing a great job at this. And we just need to get everyone involved, everybody work together, because everybody knows blight, everybody drives around the city every day. You don't go one, you don't go on one trip from your house where you don't see a bad situation. I don't care where you live, north or south, you're going to see something that is ugly. And it's a residence or a business, so, you know, let's work together, let's be proud of our city. Let's work together, you know, city council, administration, our ordinance department, they're doing a great job. Let's get these new people in there. Let's have a study session, have everyone's input. And I'm sure they've got an idea of what they want to do with these officers. But, you know, it'd be nice if everyone was informed instead of finding out through the grapevine, things that are happening. And I mean, this, we're council members, but you deserve just as much right to know what's going on as we do. And I think it's unfair that we're not getting the updated information, so. But that, you know, that's why I want to say, I want to, I want to plan a full-blown study session and invite everyone ahead of time, so everyone knows. And I welcome, and we all welcome everyone's, anyone's input on this. We're open for comments or anything right now, if anyone wants to say anything.
Councilor.
Councilor.
Councilman Amad.
Thank you, Councilor. I want to thank Councilman Wenzel for bringing this forward. I do believe, I think the administration did mention before that they were going to have somebody at the Building Department. I think that they did mention a couple times. Regarding Airbnb's, I think it's a big subject, and I think the Planning Commission, not sure if they had the meeting or they're supposed to, this Thursday. They're having the meeting about it to, just to set the rules and regulation about how to control Airbnb's, which is, I think we needed, because still on the state level, there was a House bill that was proposed and still hasn't been agreed on. So far, they're still leaving the decision to be made by municipalities. So I do think as a city, we need to jump on this, and I'm glad that they're having a meeting about it this Thursday, so they can set some rules and regulation about Airbnb's. I mean, I do understand a lot of people probably, our city doesn't like it. Some people up north, they live on the Airbnb's, so it's a, that's like a big business for them. They want it in their cities, but I understand some cities, they don't, they don't care for it. But again, thank you for bringing this forward. I think it's a great thing, and hopefully we can all work together to achieve the ultimate goal. To move the city forward.
Yes, yes.
Councilor.
Thank you, Councilor.
Thank you so much, Councilman Amad. I'm going to go with Councilman Breyer first.
Yeah, Tom, when you say South End, you're excluding Telegraph to Inglewood Road.
I did say that.
No, you said Southfield to Telegraph.
Then I said west of Telegraph.
Okay. And we also go north. People think it's Michigan Avenue, but really it's Cherry Hill.
That's the Tifa area. I mentioned Tifa.
All right, okay.
Thank you.
Thanks, Nancy.
And the other thing, the things you're putting in the mailboxes, do they have stamps on them?
No.
Then they're illegal.
Oh, I mean, I put them in the door.
You gotta put them in the doors or something else. Yeah, be careful with that.
I put them in the door, that's right.
I think even if you had a stamp, it would still be illegal.
Councilor.
Hang on one second, Roger. I just want to say a quick thing. You know, I agree, I agree with you, Councilman, wholeheartedly. We do need more ordinance officers. I think one is not enough. We budgeted for three, we passed a resolution for three. Give us the damn three ordinance officers, not one. That's number one. Number two, I wholeheartedly believe you cannot designate an ordinance officer just to the South End and then say, but, you know, I'm not going to have anything in the North End, because like, we need to stop dividing our community up. I do, and I understand and I comprehend that there is a South and there is a North, right? And that's real, because there's 48125 and there's 48127. But what I will wholeheartedly tell you is that we can break things down into districts, and we can say that this ordinance officer is going to be in charge of this district, so that you, and I believe they already do that currently. But I want us to kind of drift away from saying things like, well, I want something in the South End. You know, imagine like, I stood up here and I said, I want something in the North End. It's unfair to the residents that voted for you in the North End, and for me to say something like that for those who supported me in the South End. This is the city of Dearborn Heights. We can break things up into different districts. And I only say this, Councilman, just for the correction of, I know your intentions are great, and I know what's, what you, I think what's really happening is we're seeing a lot more renters in the South End than you're seeing in the North End. And so you are, you are seeing, there is, guys, there is a drastic amount of new renters on the South End than there are on the North End. And so you're going to, so what you're seeing is these people that are living in these houses, they're, they're there for a short period of time, and they're either leaving, and they're leaving, or they're, they're taking out all their stuff and they're throwing them right out onto these roads or onto the street. I've seen photos where I saw like a house covered with all, so much blood. I think there was, I think I reached out to the ordinance director, there was maybe 25 tires on the front lawn. 25 tires. It was the weirdest thing I've ever seen. And I don't remember, I don't know, Bill, if you remember that.
Absolutely, I do.
It was 25 tires.
I was on vacation when that occurred.
And I called, and I had to call them, because the resident sent me a photo, and I was blown away. And so then when I called, it turned out that the person worked at a tire shop, they needed someone to dispose those tires. They knew they were leaving at this rental property, and they disposed all their tires on this property, and they drove off. So, you know, and let me tell you something, there's zero room, there's zero room for disrespecting this community, like, zero room. I want you to know that I'm, and so aside from having these three ordinance officers, I think we also need to start increasing our ticket pricing and how we're going to start ticketing these people. You know, nothing from the audience, from the audience, please, sir. But I will say, please, Mr. Owen. I will tell you that just the other day, I did almost a two-hour bike ride, eight miles to the North End, with a resident, who told me, Mo, I want you to come with me, and I want to show you the blight. And as we were making our bike, and we rode from Hess to Warren, Warren down to like Riverside Neighborhoods, and we ended up on Telegraph, I mean, and you could, this older 60-year-old woman, we had this 34-year-old, like, I couldn't breathe, and she was just kind of going through it. But we saw businesses, we saw homes, we saw things that I cannot explain to you, that unless you look, you're not going to see it. And I was truly so disappointed, and this was completely the North End. I was completely disappointed, and some of these, majority of these homes were homeowners. They weren't renters. These were people that lived, pay their taxes, this is their house, their kids go to school, they bought this house on either a mortgage or haven't paid off, and they had the audacity to walk out of their house and we see six foot, you know, you know, six foot weeds in their backyard and behind their garage. It's disgusting. And that's when then you start complaining, why are the rodents? And it's not fair to this community, it's not fair to your neighbors. And so really, you know, these three ordinance officers that we requested for should have been hired in May and should have been tackling these issues throughout the entire summer. Because when a snowfall comes, or when it starts getting cold and everything dies, you don't really see much of the blight. It's just unfair. You'll start seeing some of like, the debris that's on the grass, or the stuff, the garbage that's on their lawn, but you're not seeing the actual weeds and the tall grass and things like that. And I know the ordinance officers are doing a phenomenal job, you know, there's only so much three officers or four officers can do. Three officers on a part-time.
Okay. I'm running. No, just kidding. We got, I want to start, you know, at six.
Yeah, we will.
But, you know, just two things, real quick.
Real question. I'm going to let Roger go first.
Let me just, let me just finish, just one little part.
Okay.
The only reason I said another one at the South End is because from Southfield to Telegraph is the largest area in Dearborn Heights for one officer to patrol.
100%.
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's a huge, huge area for one person. And we don't want, I don't want to make this look like it's a rental problem, issue, because I've got two renters on my block that take care of their property better than anyone else on our block. So this is not a renter issue, and I don't want to, you know, out, you know, outprice renters, because...
No, we're not talking about renters. We're a welcoming community.
Yeah, I know, that's what I'm saying. We don't care who they are.
But regardless of what's happening.
It's the owners of the property you go after, not the people that live there. Thank you, okay, I'm sorry.
It's okay.
Go ahead, Roger.
Thank you, Councilor. Just as a clarification, the, the short-term rental, it's an ordinance, proposed ordinance that's before the Planning Commission with rules and regulations for them to vote on before it comes to you. So we'll have an ordinance to deal with Airbnb's. It's already been reviewed by buildings. So once it's, if it's voted on and approved, whatever changes, then it's going to come to you as a proposed ordinance.
What time is that meeting on Thursday?
I think it's six, whatever time they usually, I think it's six. I'll double-check and see.
Is it the Planning Commission?
Yes, Planning Commission, yes. And then I would add that the issue with those tires was a vindictive act by the renter against the owner, putting them deliberately on that property, so it was more even a criminal violation with that. It wasn't just somebody moving out, leaving tires. It was malicious and purposeful. The, the issue of blight, I have gone through, and Mr. Dishroom met with Dearborn as the best ones, we looked at Allen Park and a few others. We've put a proposal together, Mr. Dishroom and I are finishing, that will show you the changes that we're proposing from the current ordinance we have to what we want to add. Significant changes and differences, that's, you will see the changes before and after, so to speak, and what we want to add to make sure you have a blight ordinance that you can vote on, that's in a format that addresses your issues, and what Mr. Councilman has brought up before. The issue of the meeting tomorrow night, with I mentioned to you before, the concept of living cities. It's in 10 United States cities, supported by the Wall Street Journal, Washington Post, a number of big philanthropic organizations. It changes, it gives money, $15,000 per person to become, to change from a renter to a homeowner. It also gives $100,000 for small businesses. In other words, and money for people to rehab their houses. So if we can get them here, they're looking, I believe, at Detroit, we wanted up to look at our area, especially the Vanderbilt area, where we can help people become homeowners. Our wealth, 61% of Americans' wealth is from the home that they own. So this is a possibility to deal with what Mr. Wenzel has correctly brought up, that we want to franchise people. And, 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 yeah, homeowners will have their homes, but we want to have an opportunity and a business opportunity to franchise people and give them stability and give them ownership in the city. I don't agree, though, that rental homes is just a business to make a profit. Rental homes are life, are people's lives, and people live in those homes, and they have kids in schools here, they're invested in here. They just don't have the money, many of them, to buy their own home as a down payment. So this is a step, and I'm saying it's not me, it would be a step as our city, our, our city council and our administration working together to franchise homeowners. Anyway, so I think with the blight ordinance, the short-term rental ordinance, I think we have some start to really change some of the circumstances that Mr. Wenzel's brought up.
What time?
The meeting tomorrow night, it's at 8:00, but that's...
That's Thursday, isn't it?
Oh, 6:00, Thursday, yes.
Thursday, not Wednesday.
The Planning Commission, yes. Okay. That's the separate meeting I have with...
Are we done?
Yes.
Thank you.
And we're going to hear from our Honorable Ordinance Director, Mr. Bill Dishroom.
Thank you, Councilor Chair. I won't get too deep into the woods here. I think Councilman Wenzel covered a lot of the, a lot of the things we spoke earlier today. The ordinance officer being hired is, was, occurred this week. There was an offer submitted, I had HR submit the offer of employment to one of the officers. And then the other thing is, one of the, one of our officers actually moved this week into the Building Department to work more directly with them, with Building Inspector for inspections and stuff like that. Like I said, I spoke with Councilman Wenzel about that already, so. One of the things I wanted to mention, it's great that we're going to get the, I want to hire all three ordinance officers. Some of the things that are GL items in there that were not funded, like, I don't have space for three officers in my office. The reason we moved out of City Hall was because we were out of space. Now, I moved into a space that was perfect for the number that I had, now we're trying to increase that. I'll figure it out. I don't, I don't know what it's going to cost, I haven't looked into that yet. I'm working with Mr. Cooper, Director Cooper, for, because we need laptops, we need phones. There's a lot of things that come with adding these positions, and I might need one more car. I'll have to double-check on that. But these are things that you funded the, you funded the salaries, but not the other components of it, so. And it's, it is what it is, we'll figure it out, right? We can always do an amendment if we have to, right?
I believe we put in there the salaries, the longevity, and then I believe Mariana also told us of an additional $5,000 for like equipment and phones and things of that nature, so.
That's, and salaries, or?
I believe so.
Oh, so we can, we can move it if we have to into the line item that's necessary. Okay, fair enough. Another issue that came up recently, that's not necessarily on your radar yet, we're still working on that, they just reached out to us, is our agreement with Michigan Humane. Again, another thing, I'm not going to get too deep into the woods on, but that's something that's one of my budget items. We're working on that, we're going to, Roger and I are going to meet again next week, Michigan Humane. The last thing I wanted to touch on is the nuisance ordinance that Roger mentioned from Dearborn. It's, it's fire. I'm going to tell you right now, and I believe Councilman Sob had mentioned before about a property of his being cut, the grass was cut like in three days. Their, their ordinance has anywhere from three to 10 days, and they literally cover everything, it's covered in the ordinance. They don't have to get court orders to go onto people's property, that's how we have to do it now. That, the way that ordinance is written, they're allowed to do what they have to do on a property after the owner is notified on violation, they've been posted, and they're sent a letter. They go out within 10 days and clean it up. So it's, it's significant, it's, it's a game changer. I don't know, the other thing, too, is if it's actually approved, you have to consider the backlash. If you guys approve it, the ordinance, once it's written, you might get some blowback from people who aren't happy with it, because it's definitely different than the whole process we go through right now to go onto somebody's property and clean it up, but it's, it's crazy. They don't, they don't, they don't mess around, it's pretty, it's pretty intense, quite honestly, so.
I have a question.
Sure.
How many people have applied for our ordinance department?
How many?
How many, how many people have applied for the position?
I have, I have a current list that I'm working off of right now.
I've had a couple of people reach out to me, like, hey, I've applied, hey, I've applied.
I, that's, yeah.
And I said to them, you can have me the one person you don't want to tell, because the administration will definitely not...
Yeah. I, I, that's, honestly, that's an HR question, if they have the application, and I don't, I don't, it's not sent directly to me.
A bunch of people are applying, why are we only hiring one when we requested three?
Well, I've got the list, again, I, logistics, I have to, I have to feather these people in, I have to try to make space. I have to get computers and the computers and the phones, and my office is limited in space, so I'm going to have people, they're going to be double-stacked if I hire three people at one time.
The good news is, we have so much room inside the Justice Center. We don't expect these people to be inside the office, we expect them to be out on the roads and issuing, you know, citations.
Right. And they, again, yes, I, that is, that is correct, but they do have to have a space to make callbacks, they have to have a space to synchronize their tablets when they come back. And then the tablets that I have actually right now have been in service, they sat for some unknown reason, and when I got into this position, I deployed them immediately. They've been around for probably four, four and a half years, so a lot of them are cycling towards their end of life. So I did get approval from Tifa.
Director, I'm just going to interrupt. No, no, wait, I bought the tablets, so we don't forget. Please, as a request to Cooper, when you ask for new tablets, I want, I mean, most council want, I want them to have internet access on the tablets, not a hot wife or hotspot, so that way they can be on the field to look up stuff, they don't have to come back to waste time.
We can...
Because you got to go log through your phone to get the hotspot for them now, correct?
Correct.
So they can get cell service directly into those tablets.
Okay. I, do you know, then when they're in the field, if they sync in the morning, they have the most recent information when they leave the office. You're, I don't know if you're trying to...
Because we're supposed to, we're supposed to link the Building Department for you guys to know if there's permits being pulled or everything accessed to, but a lot of your officers say that their tablets aren't synced when they're on the field, and actually it's a distraction for them to always have to connect to the device. It should be available directly to the cell service.
That, yeah, that's an added cost, that's something that we can look into. They, we tried that originally, and there were some issues with BSA. The problem that we were having is, they were going through, through their phone, using it as a hotspot, and the internet, the speed is not fast enough to, to connect, so that's, obviously, that was a frustration.
So you should be able to integrate where the actual tablet, right now, like my son's tablet can go up north, because I paid the $5 a month to Verizon, he can use his iPad anywhere.
Yeah.
So imagine being able to, hang on one second, Councilman. Imagine being able to, be able to sync something, put it in on the spot, it being updated, and now everybody can see it, because you have the internet capability. Instead of having to finish the day, drive back, do it in the morning, and not knowing if somebody else already went out there.
All right, I'd like to call this the update session to an end, so we can get our regular meeting started on time. We'll be, we'll be planning a study session with your blessings.
Councilman, thank you, but I'll be the one to make that one.
No, I said it with your blessings.
Yeah. I'm going to let, I'm going to let the Director finish before we make that. I mean, we've started meetings with four or five minutes late. It'll be all right, Councilman. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Chair. The only thing I wanted to touch, go back to is with respect to being live in the field on the tablet, laptop, Surface Pro, whatever you want to call it. You have to have a VPN, and you have to be connected to the server, so there's security and speed issues. It's, I'm sure it's not something we can overcome, so it's, thank you for bringing that up, Councilman.
Any other council members? All right. Thank you so much, Mr. Director Dishroom.
Thank you.
Now I'm going to take it out to the public, comments on the Councilman Wenzel's three positions for the ordinance department. Any comments?
Right here. You know, I got a comment.
Are you using your additional two minutes here?
No, I'm not using my additional. This is only for, this, I didn't tell you about study session, did I?
You have...
I didn't even know I was coming here. I didn't even know I was coming here.
You got three minutes. Please state your name, the city you reside in, the street that you live on, sir.
I reside at a PO box. My name is Hassan Ayun.